Okay, three, two, one.
Okay, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Wednesday, February 26, 2025. It is 9:08 a.m. My name is Ty Mensur, Chair of the Board. To my left, no, to my right is the Zoom screen where I see Commissioners Grant, Mahia, Klaus, and Fournier. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings. Budget team's here for our first agenda item. Public virtual attendance, you may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Written public comment may be received up to two hours in advance of the board meeting and will be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners if received. Action may be taken at this meeting. So we have a few items to cover this morning. First up is quarterly budget update.
Thank you so much, Chair and Commissioners, both in the room and remote. We have our budget team with us. It says quarterly budget update, but we will be coming probably for the next few months on a monthly basis as we talk through different aspects of building the 26, 27 biennial budget. That was the direction that we received from the board in the end of 2024 as we built the 2025 budget. So we have a presentation ready to go, and I'll hand over to Budget Fiscal Manager Summer Miller to introduce her team and engage.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Summer Miller, Budget Manager for the Thurston County. Thank you. I have part of my team here. Tiffany West, who is overseeing the programs in law and justice. Jennifer Smith, who is overseeing our programs related to court services and public health and social services. And Dolly Alphonsen Seka is running a little late. She's participating on an interview panel that will be joining us shortly. And she oversees most of our capital-related items in CPED, Public Works, Central Services, IT. So I will ask that during this presentation, that you ask questions, if you have them, please know that we are all taking notes. But if you have a specific question that you would like an answer to, to be brought back at our next meeting sometime at the end of March, Tiff is the person that I would like you to address the question to so that she can collect those holistically and we can give you a good package of information next go around. So if I can drive this thing. We will get started. There you go. Thank you with the budget update. So this is your overview and forecast update for the quarter. We'll move that out of your way, maybe to the right. There you go. Thank you. So these are some economic highlights that we wanted to bring to your attention. Washington State's general economic activity has shown us over the last few months that the general fund revenue collections through, anticipated through 2029, have just decreased by about $400 million from their overall late fall 2024 forecast. The revenue shortfall in state collections for major general fund state revenues has fluctuated a bit. In November of 2024, it was 1.3% lower than forecasted at just under 78 million. In December, it was about 1% lower than forecasted at about 47 million. And in January 2025, it was 2.6% higher than forecasted at just under $61 million, and essentially reversing the December shortfall. This reversal in estimated receipts is showing some resiliency, but also it's showing a level of volatility that we believe warrants a more frequent review of your general fund health overall to help you make good, better decisions as we go into building the next biennial budget.
The reason Commissioners were putting this information up just as a kickoff to the conversation is because we wanted the budget team to start to use clear indicators as to how we're building that forecast. So there's not a question about, well, where did you get that forecast number? Why are you using this number or that number? Looking to the state and looking to eventually, you know, a couple of other indicators. Will we be putting that together so that we can share and explain to the organization how those numbers are coming together? And I think that's an important aspect of just level setting. That's what we're looking at. But you can see that down and then up, that is a little bit unstable. And that's why we want to come back quarterly to be tracking what revenues look like and then what the work Summer's doing with the budget team with our offices and departments to also be tracking expenses so we can narrow down and fine tune some of the detail that we're giving you as Commissioners to help you make decisions.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this slide? No? Okay. So we're going to take a look back to spring 2024. Roughly at the beginning of April 2024, this is the General Fund Forecast Visual Aid as it was presented to the Board. It was the guiding document for the Amendment 1 2024 budget decisions that were made. And it is based on prior past practices in the modeling of our general fund. I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a pretty gnarly model for those that are looking at it for the first time. I know I had to have it explained to me quite a bit. We're continuing to use it because it is, I mean, it's not a perfect model. No model is perfect, but it is a tool that this organization is very accustomed with. And so Summer will just walk through some of the key components. But I know it took me a briefing by the budget team to go over it in detail to understand all the, how everything plays out. So we're happy to do that offline with any Commissioner who would like a deeper dive on this.
Absolutely, 100%. Thank you. So if you're looking at the model for the first time or as a refresher, the bars indicate fund balance. The gray hashed lines in the prior years is prior actuals where we landed for fund balance. In this particular model, the pinkish bar is the 2022. Actuals, the green is 2023. 24 and 25 are highlighted in yellow, and that was the beginning of that biennial. The out years are reflected again in the gray hash lines. The green line and the red lines are delineating your expenditures and your revenues, and green for revenues, red for expenditures. The blue line is the minimum fund balance that we're aiming for, and then the black line would be the minimum one month fund balance, excuse me, one month minimum fund balance. I've had some questions. The blue line starts erratically in the middle of the graph, I believe, because if I look back at our records, that that may have been a point in time where the Board requested that particular information be included in these presentations. We've made some small tweaks to this. You'll see as we move forward. This showed a pretty positive outlook for future fund balance for the county.
It also showed the red and green line, which is revenue and expenses needing out to the out years, which is really important because then that's the forecast of we'll get there. Things will balance out and revenue will pick up and overtake expenses, and we should be good.
Can I add one thing?
Absolutely.
The blue line's not random. The blue line, so the blue line represents two months of like operational, which is my understanding is general government accounting standard practice to try to meet as a target. That really wasn't being looked at prior to 20, you know, the blue line comes in because that's when we started to really focus on looking at that and trying to target for that, not just previous to that. It was really just that black line at the bottom. So we tried to up our game, so to speak, and try to hit the blue line as we project forward.
That is correct. The blue line is indicating your target fund balance of two months. And I do believe that it began in that year to show you not only your
And we were there prior to this amendment.
Absolutely.
That's when things started to, you know, shift a little bit.
Any other questions? No? Thank you. So if we go ahead to the next slide, we're again taking a look back. This is your midterm budget with budget recommendations. It was the general fund adjusted forecast as it was presented beginning in early October 2024 through budget adoption in 2024 for the midterm change requests. It reflects your fund balance scenario with recommended to fund items. If you recall, we had a lot of discussions in October going into December of recommended versus not recommended to fund based on the impacts to the general fund and business continuity across offices and departments in general.
Yeah, this was the bad news presentation. This was us identifying that as Robin and Summer dug into the documentation, the modeling, and that was very much appreciated as Robin was getting reacquainted with the detail from the former budget and fiscal manager. They rebuilt this, I think, a number of times to make sure it was accurate. And this is also an environment where TC Connect and information coming over required the budget team to do a lot of manual calculation, pulling information together. I think the module was, the budget module was under works at that time. And so there's several challenges, but what the team did is they flagged immediately that based on what they, what they thought was taking place when the amendment was approved wasn't the actual outlook. And if you recall, we had a series of meetings to really dig in and go over that.
Yes, all true. This model showed us the beginning of the shortfall deficit that the County Manager and Budget has been discussing for a few months now. And it does show very clearly that the two-month target fund balance is below in 2025 and steadily declining. And our cash flow needs at this point in time, if we look back, would not be met in 2026.
I think what's challenging about the red line as it, as it goes into the out years and it becomes a dashed line, is that the red line anticipates like almost no-growth budgets. There's a, there's small, I think the cola might be in there, but that's a placeholder cola. That's not what could be negotiated with some of the contracts that are under play right now. But that's like zero general fund increase, which isn't realistic if, because, because as some of the other offices and departments have highlighted, if you have a no-growth budget, but your inflation and internal costs keep going up, unless you reduce those, it is a cut. And so that's the best-case scenario that we do in no-growth situation, and those lines aren't meeting, which is why the budget team flagged it for me and the Commissioners of, wait, we really need to talk. Because then for the first time in, in a very, you know, not-too-distant future, in '27, we flatlined the fund balance, and then we go into the negative, which you can't operate there. And the goal was to, what you said, Commissioner Mensur, was to try to stay, hover above or just below that blue line, and we were, we just zeroed out our fund balance. So that's where the team flagged that. We had the conversation about status quo in 2025 and these conversations starting. The premise for this conversation is just a reset, coming out from the new, from finishing the calendar year, coming into this year, making sure that everyone, as this new board is seated in '25, understands the information that's being presented, can ask questions, that, because this is the premise of the containment conversations we'll have from this point on. Not this model per se, but the additional information that will be presented. It's just a level set to make sure we're all on the same page.
Do we have any questions on this slide? No?
Hi, this is Rachel. Hey, you guys. I'm sorry, there is a nurse in the room with my son, and so I missed just a tiny little bit of this, but I just, I think I'm, this is a great graph. It's very clear for me. I think it's great. So nice to have you guys. Just a quick question. I just want to make sure I'm following. So more or less what we're saying here on the right side of this graph is that we're going to be digging into our reserves or our, our, what we're calling fund balance, over and over and over again until we're just down in the, like, in the negative. It's kind of what this is telling us, right? The story?
Yes, Commissioner. That's 100%.
And that's based on the green, the gap between green and red. Greens revenue and red's expenditure as time goes forward. That, I mean, there had to be a gap because of the huge fund balance you see in those, in the middle of the graph. But, but that's, but a year ago, that looked like they were closing in at a much more earlier point than it's looking now with the new revenue projection.
Yeah, part of this is the, the revenue isn't performing at the anticipated amount. It was down coming out of the 2024. And we were reducing the forecasted or the anticipated amount until it was underperforming or flat. So even if it performs at what we estimate once we estimate it down and it's flat, it's just not going to keep pace with expenses at the current rate.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm actually going to skip this one because they're a little bit out of order and go to the next slide, and we'll go back to the other one. As we continue our look ahead, this is our estimated 2024 year-end closeout, keeping in mind that we have not closed 2024 out yet. The figures that are here as actuals are as of, I believe, February 17. One of the commitments that I've made to the County Manager is I am trying to take at least a daily look at where we are with revenue receipts and expenditures. That's netting out to about three times per week so that I can kind of get a feel for what's happening. The revenue that you see here is general fund. It's estimated by type, actual, and totals. You can see the property tax, sales tax, other tax, the total amount 2024 after the adjustments in the First Amendment in the midterm is 124 million is the budgeted, estimated amount of revenues. Our actual to date is just under 123 million. So there's almost a $2 million difference there in receipt expectations, which is a little concerning to us because we had already witnessed a decline in sales tax receipts and were estimating it to further decline. And at last look, it was sitting at about 1.6% of total collection. So I'm still monitoring that. This shows your 2025 estimated property tax, sales tax, other in total. As we go through these more frequent monitors, if you will, of the general fund and the performance, we may come to you and ask that we adjust some of these revenue expectations in the amendment and moving forward. The expenditures here are laid out by quarters. The amounts that are estimated per quarter are thanks to our wonderful Darren Bennett and Financial Services through some collaboration we did in October, I believe it was, after some prompting from our auditor and County Management here. And it shows the actuals each quarter underneath of that, and that the totals are coming in a little under $6 million less than anticipated. So we're still projecting about a $7 million overall difference from what was originally estimated. Let's see. Oh, and the expenditures themselves, I do want to point out that that $5 million difference in what is being estimated to be expended is actually a 4.1% reversion. So that's an important fact to highlight for you. Historically, in the prior models, a 3% reversion has been built into the expenditures. We are working on working that out of the model, working out an expectation that there will be a level of reversion.
Yeah, that's important because we really want our departments to operationally spend the dollars the Board has approved. And I think we're going to look to structure things to where there's a lot more connectivity so that we can help them realize that. And obviously, during times when staffing was really rough and, you know, there's, and filling those positions was very difficult, like in the pandemic, et cetera, that's understandable. But it's just not a good practice to balance things with a reversion built in. You're almost banking on taking money back out, which I would argue, why are you operationally scheduling it to be spent? So just a little change, but it will have an impact. Because my desire would be in supporting our offices and departments is to help them realize what they need within the dollars that the Board has authorized them to spend. And I think we have a budget team that's gearing up to do that and building, again, that connectivity and communication to accomplish that.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So we're going to go back one slide to the one I skipped over in your packets. It would be slide number five. Thank you for your patience as, you know, we put this together. It's a little, it's out of whack. So this is a look ahead based on our current approach, estimated on 2024 year-end closeout and future forecast of 2025 and out years. This model, as the County Manager highlighted a couple slides back, is based on a very minimal amount of growth built in. That's typically a 3% cola. It doesn't include any active contract negotiations or potentials of where those figures may land. It does include the 3% reversion. There is no other inflation factors that are added in here. There's no growth. There is no increase to benefits. There's no growth to supplies, to services, to inter-funds. And we are working to change that. This also shows that your fund balance is lower than projected at year-end in our prior model, the prior model being the midterm. We did make some improvements. If you look at this one as far as ensuring that the alignment of the years, the closeout year is now highlighted in the salmon pink. 2025 is in green. The build, the 26, 27 biennial build is in yellow. The fund balance indicators of actuals and future years are still in the gray hash marks. And we have imposed the actual fund balance amount year over year. And the numbers that are encompassed in the parentheses are a negative fund balance scenario. You can see that in past years, your expenditures and your revenues are now a solid line to show that those are essentially actuals realized. And then this year and then future years out are hashed, either a hash mark or ticks. And yes, I'm sorry, was there a question? Yes.
So as we're looking at these forecasts, does this include the ongoing shift from the road fund?
That does not after 2025.
Okay, so after 2025, there is zero shift from the road fund?
We don't have that built into the model.
Okay.
Thank you for that question.
Just, team, are we 100% on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It's not, it's not in the future years. The future years is just increases, and we're going to look at that. So the next slide is going to be a closer look at this. This is big and it's busy, and it shows you a lot of information, including actuals through 2023, since we're still closing '24. But if we go to the next slide, it, I'm sorry, we got to skip over one.
Seven?
Yes, slide number seven. Thank you, because five and six were switched up here. This is a zoom in, if you will, of where we are in that prior slide five in '24 through 2034. So essentially, it's giving you, we'll say, an 11-year period, 10 years in the future, including this year, because we haven't finished this year. This particular view is based on maintaining our past practice, and you can see that the revenue estimates year-over-year are 3% in property tax. I did make one adjustment to our current practice. I adjusted the sales tax expectations of 4% and 3% to 2.5% and a 0% increase in revenue and all other.
Can you explain the drop to 2.5% and the rationale behind that?
Yes. So we base this rationale on what we are seeing actually coming in for sales tax and also based off of the publications that we read and reference and consider being OFM and the Economic Revenue and Forecast Council, and the fluctuations of what they're seeing as far as revenues coming in. I do want to highlight that on the first slide, when I added the January revenues coming in at an increased rate, those figures did not play into a change in this particular slide because this slide was basically in its finalization phases, Valentine's Day weekend, and we were making some small tweaks. So the, this projection will change over time throughout the year, right? I don't want anyone to think that this is the gospel as we move forward.
Let's talk a little bit about that. So the, I think, Commissioner, the change is that we want to be coming to you quarterly, looking at what we actually received, and how that is trending with the forecast. If we start to receive a lot more revenue and 2.5% is too conservative, then we will start to adjust in the out years. Because we're not trying to build an ultra-conservative approach just to save a bunch of money in the out years. But because 2024 performed the way it did and closed the year out, it's, I'm concerned that if we use 3% and 4%, we're being overly optimistic. Let the economy get to 3% and 4% for two quarters, and then this team will be responsive. That's, that's a little bit of a change because when the biennial was built, those out-year forecasts weren't necessarily changed. And I think that's where there was some feeling of, well, maybe County Commissioners' office is being too conservative because, you know, things move around. We want to create an ability to be nimble, and if things start coming back better, to get, to realize that and communicate that early on so that we can start to adjust things. Obviously, all of us in this room want things to perform better than they're performing right now. And when they do perform better, that's good news because then we can look at how does that translate into Board direction for operations, et cetera. But right now, I think it would create a harder situation if, after the first quarter, the economy doesn't recover. And what we're asking staff to do is not just spitball it in the dark on their own, but to use the state and other economic indicators as the baseline and then track that with what we're actually getting, working with the auditor's team that helps with some of gathering that information and give you quarterly updates so that we can be responsive.
Thank you. So another thing I wanted to highlight here, besides the revenues and the expenditures we were talking about, maintaining past practice, is obviously the very visual declining fund balance here. There is a, there are little arrows that you can see between the expenditure line and the revenue line that are indicating your projected shortfall year over year. On the bottom right of the screen, those are the black numbers right after the years. And then the fund balance is indicated in green and red to show you a positive fund balance scenario and a negative fund balance scenario. And you can see that as we go forward, we are anticipating a pretty significant negative fund balance 10 years out.
And in this model, what it does not anticipate is anything beyond a 3% cola placeholder in our negotiations with our unions. It does not anticipate the final decision about the public defender caseload standards. As we get information on that and we kind of work that through, we will come back with a, probably in March, when we talk about containment, what some of those things do in addition to what we have here. I think for this conversation, we just wanted to keep it based on what U.S. Commissioners have I think for this conversation, we just wanted to keep it based on what US commissioners have seen in the past and really dial in on the revenue side. You see the fund balance going to the red and you can look at the numbers as to what that disconnect is, whether it's 12, 10, 12, 11, 10. So, you know, it's averaging there around 10.5 million as what our ongoing issue is.
Thank you. If we go on to the next slide, this is our future forecasted look ahead, updating our practices based on our estimated 2024 year end closeout future forecast. Updating the forecasting approach to maintain a three percent property tax, reducing the sales tax receipts currently further to 1.5%. Again, to be more in alignment with what we have seen coming in over the last six months. It does include COLAs, yes ma'am?
Sorry, you said three percent property tax?
That is typically what we have been projecting and it's fairly close to that, yes.
Was it 2.5 or 1.5 on the sales tax?
Initially, it was four percent for, five percent for this year. We adjusted it down on the prior slide to two and a half percent based off of what we were seeing at year end at 1.6. This particular model is updating our practices to include growth factors and reducing that a little bit more. Okay, but a little more in alignment. But as the county manager stated, this is becoming an extension of myself and my team, right? We are living, breathing, talking this every single day. So we are going to pivot and make adjustments and signal those quickly to leadership so that we can get in front of you if we see anything that is positive or negative, so that you can make good decisions and be prepared for that. So this also, as I said, includes growth factored into benefits, supplies, services, any other type of interfunds. And you can see, and the next slide is gonna give us a closer view as we just went through, that the fund balance scenario is much more bleak. So we're gonna go on to slide number nine. This is the zoomed in version of the prior slide, again, showing you all of the same facts from two slides back. The fiscal year 2024 fund balance is 26, just under 27 million, which is less than we anticipated in the fall of 2024. You can see that you have a declining fund balance. In 2028, it is dropping down to 26 and a half million. And it's based on three percent property tax, adjusted, 1.5% sales tax, adjusted. No other increases to the other areas of general fund tax collections, adjusting our expenditure outlook in future years. Making a note here that we are gonna work to remove our dependency on reversion, but that is not actively built into this model. And again, at the bottom right, showing you your revenue to expenditure projected shortfall with the red-green line. The actual fund balance is in red or green and then the shortfall amount is immediately in black after the year indicated.
Obviously, what a forecast is, is it just shows the momentum if current trends continue. So when you get into the way out years, the value of it is more, is not for its accuracy, it's just for, this is the direction things could be headed.
Absolutely, thank you. And that's, you know, considering those small amounts of growth that we're factoring in, but no other, like not increasing staffing, not, not including any potential contract increases. So.
Seems like the takeaway from the two, comparison of the two is whereas in the previous one, which was contained out, you were saying 10 and a half million dollar, it's looking at this one, it's more like 13 to 14. Is the true, is a more of a true.
We believe that it is true.
Annual structural deficit, so to speak.
Sure.
That's like the number, and that's why I asked the team, she did a great job of including that number so you can see how it plays out.
Yeah, and you know, I'm reading this kind of in the same way, Ty, but, but hearing, making sure that I'm hearing it kind of loud and clear that we haven't projected. I mean, that 13.5 is about what we're projecting, but that's without, you know, any of these other legislative or policy or adjustments for contracts. And so it's gonna be probably a much bigger number.
Yep, that's a great perspective, Commissioner. Yeah, this presentation is, does not include what is happening to potential revenue sources that the team is putting together, those impacts to the county from federal level.
I, I wanna just stop here and say, this is really great work to the budget team and really great graph and good job really telling the story and clearly laying out. This is very helpful to me and I, and I just, I'm impressed, so good job, good job, because.
Thank you, I appreciate you saying that. The team is a wonderful, wonderful team, so we appreciate the kind words. Okay, so moving on to slide number 10. This is our future forecasted with a six percent reduction in expenditures. I don't like using that word, we are, containment is the word choice. But we do need to look at how can we reduce expenditures if our current reality continues throughout this year. This is based on our updated practices and I say updated, we are updating and we are continuously updating these practices. We are not committed to one particular way of doing this, right? So as, as things go along and we find better ways of getting you this information, you might see some slight variances to the presentations.
This, these next two slides are really just for the sake of exercise. It's not that there's anything magical about the six percent or the next slide that someone will go through 10%. It's just simply going through an exercise for you to see if there's those changes, what that would look like.
Yes, thank you for that. So this is a six percent reduction in expenditures. It does include the normal three percent reversion. I did not, essentially, I overlaid the six percent on top of the three percent, so it's included in here. It has all of the same revenue estimates that we are updating in our current model. The expenditures, including all of the areas of consideration outside of COLAs, does not include, as the county manager stated, any contracts actively in negotiation or upcoming or any legislative changes, still shows a declining fund balance, which is negative in 2028. And again, the revenue expenditure projected shortfall is the red-green line. Shows you your fund balance in green or red to the right bottom corner and then immediately after the years in black, the shortfall between revenues and expenditures. And you can see that even with the six percent reduction in our expenditures, we are still showing a steadily declining fund balance in the future. Okay, so slide 11 is with a 10% consideration at 13.8 million with our updated practices. And this essentially is showing that we are not in a negative fund balance scenario in the out years, but we are still not in a great position. The fund balance, if you look to 2034, is $964,000, which is really not anywhere close to our current 12 to 23 or 24 million dollars that we need to maintain our operational costs. One thing I wanna highlight is that 12 to 23 or 24 million is, it's, that's a moving target, right? Like, so our minimum and our ideal fund balance levels are dependent on what we're spending. So those numbers will be changing. Maybe as we move forward, we start to kind of hone in more specifically on all of the areas of this model and how the year is trending out.
This is just a starting point for discussion, which we look to bring back and the budget team is already researching. What are revenue opportunities? So we're not saying that the budget team is fixated on the reduction part of it. It's just, didn't wanna show you that model with what was a about 12, 13 million dollar difference in ongoing, without showing you what it would look like to bring that down and the effects of that. We know that that is a huge lift. So the, and I'm saying that for those that are watching, that in no way is there any, is this to depict that's the solution or that's the recommendation. This is just for the exercise. And as the team comes back, they'll come back with discussions and options for the board about revenue and what does containment look like within, before there's even any reduction. Basically, what can we do to adjust and moderate things as we build 26, 27? And that's what's important is that 25, we are, we're pretty locked in and things are going well. This is the conversation for 26, 27 and starting this early, so we're not doing this in the fall and having to pass a budget within a few months and having to go through all these considerations. And that's why I really appreciate the budget team's forethought and hard work as they're going through reworking different systems and having ideas about how do we engage better. Great, great brain power, all of them. I hear you, because we share an office wall. Here you're working things out and talking it through and having some wonderful discussions.
Thank you, they are a wonderful team, I have to say. And to what the county managers just stated, nothing that we are presenting to you is any way an indication of the budget team's wanting to sway decisions. It's just to give you the most factual, up-to-date information in as close to real time as we possibly can. So. So in our next steps, we have began this project. We will be reviewing our revenue options and budget containment. And we're hoping that we might have another one soon after that to kind of round up some more ideas. But this is coming together as a nice little presentation for you. I do wanna thank, before we open the floor for questions again, Leonard, the county manager, his support of our team has been immense and greatly appreciated. The team is growing in ways I think that are just going to get better as we go on. So the support is appreciated from the county leadership and I really wanna thank the team for always taking my direction and just being willing to run with it at a moment's notice. And I think that you will be proud to see what we can accomplish in this year to 18 months. So thank you for the opportunity. We're happy to answer any questions if you have any.
So commissioners, the plan will be, come back in March. There's a number of revenue items that we're researching. And then gets the direction from the board, March will be a direction setting time. We will look to apply some of the, if revenues realized are, is activated in a certain way, what it will do to the forecast. Then we get direction from you to look at that component, look at the budget containment. What if we were to do this or that? The team will have some ideas to then come back in April and kind of finalize the, the premise for us working with the offices and departments on preparing what a 26, 27 will look like. Again, my perspective is let's do that early, do it through the summer, look at operational impacts. Because we want this to be a process where stakeholders are able to not only talk with the budget team, but talk to the commissioners and work that through. And we avoid a pressurized situation of decision-making where folks don't feel like they have an opportunity to really understand what's going on.
So, okay, I'll get, can you finish for me a second? On that point, because I was just thinking through the same thing and I don't know where it fits in the process, but I would like to see stake, like, you know, rather than us coming up with some ideas and then hearing all of the, you know, I'll call it backlash or the input. I'd like to, on the front end somewhere, spring, summer, you know, earlier than it has been, basically send out, you know, an email to our stakeholders, like, hey, if you were, if you were, if you were engaged in this budget containment exercise that the commissioners are engaged in, sitting from your particular seat, what ideas would you want? That they might not understand, that you'd want them to consider.
Sure.
Out of the box thinking, that way, we think of all that while we, you know, like, at least we can say, we may, it may not work for various reasons, because they don't have, they don't have the big picture view that our team has and that we have. But at least we can say when we present something in the summer and fall, we, we heard that, we looked at it, we thought about it. It, it didn't make it, but trying to do all that at the back end doesn't work. And that's kind of what you were just saying.
Yeah, I think after March's meeting, based, when you see revenue options and you start to say, county manager and budget team, can you explore this and this? We can engage in a series of stakeholder engagements, because at that point, we'll know what we think is possible from a revenue side. So if revenue goes up, it reduces the amount of cuts you have or containment you have to make. And then their ideas may come in to help offset that even more. We can, I don't know if a month is enough time to bring it back in April, but we can definitely bring it back in two months to say, here's what we heard, here's some ideas for your consideration, because this is a team effort. And we, I think what we would like to chart, of course, is this is not good news, right? It would be great to do in the opposite. We have money, let's work with stakeholders, figure out what's the best way to operationalize that. But in this case, I think we can get through it through strong communication, stakeholder engagement. And then bringing that and the stakeholders back to the commissioners for conversations before it's like decisions have to be made.
Yeah, because I mean, it's just, it's the reality, the best decision, the best product can't be done without both sides.
Yes.
Because the stakeholders have information we don't have.
Exactly.
But they don't, but they don't know all the different pieces that we're juggling. So without working together, it, we don't get the best result. And that process has been, yeah, like you say, if it's too compressed, it doesn't work well.
Yeah.
Commissioner Fornier, go ahead.
Yeah, the budget team, thank you, I think you did a great job, Summer, wonderful work. I, you know, I'm, I'm excited to talk about revenue and I think that there's, there's options out there and I, I'm really looking forward to that. But I don't think we can lead with that, you know, I think, I, I feel like budget containment needs to be like put first and kind of foremost. The, you know, it's like, when I've gone out and I've talked to some of our stakeholders and talked about, you know, the importance of finding revenue opportunities, it just, there doesn't seem to be, you know, because they're all almost kind of like removed from the budget process. And, and it's like, they're not, there's just not that scrappy attitude that, you know, they, they need to find those opportunities for themselves. And, and I'm hoping that that changes with, you know, kind of these dismal forecasts. But I, I really think that budget containment needs to be, you know, put before anything else in our discussions and then the revenue stuff comes second.
And one of the things that I know the budget team is working on is they're already, Summer's already done a deep dive as to what the state has done, just to get an idea of some of those dynamics and we'll be able to report out on that, just for background, so you understand, hey, here's how another organization is handling it. And I know it's, we're nowhere near the size and scope of the state, but I appreciated the fact that she's having the team do that research now.
Some of that, we did a lot of that during the COVID thing. We were looking at, you know, the state had done furloughs and a lot of work was done to look at state and other jurisdictions strategies as we were trying to work through what the county might do right in 2020. Because we were, we were talking about a 10%, I mean, we were talking about potentially a 10% containment exercise at that point. We didn't get there. And we didn't, it turned out we didn't need to get there at that time, but that's where we started thinking. It was just, you know, like 1,400% unemployment at one month of April, I think. And we were not sure what was gonna happen, because you didn't know what was gonna, you know, how long we were gonna be shut down and whatnot. So anyway, there might be something out there that, I don't know if any written materials were presented to commissioners, I can't remember, but it might be something to just check.
I appreciate that.
From April, May, June, 2020.
I appreciate that, thank you. I have gone through a lot of the historical records that we have, just looking for places we've already visited to kind of make it a little more well-rounded and also to try not to duplicate some of the information, if you will, or efforts too badly. Like, some of it needs to be duplicated and redone because we're in a different scenario, but. But some of it has been tried and found to be not true or not the way that we want to go. So, thank you. I will definitely look in that timeframe.
Anything else? Is that, is that where we're at with this budget or this agenda item? Any other questions? Comments? I agree with Commissioner Fornier largely there in his last set of comments.
We will adjust and pivot the presentation to be presented that way.
Dolly, Jen, Tiff, we know that this short, relatively short presentation represents hours and hours of hard work and verification in an environment where we are working through a financial system. So, thank you very much for all that you did.
They are wonderful. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Onto agenda item.
I think we have to move.
Two, hopefully more positive agenda item. Treatment Sales Tax Advisory Committee, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five Strategic Plan Summit.
Good morning. Dr. Tom Freihite, Public Health and Social Services Director. A little bit, a little bit better, maybe. But same premise. So we are here today to talk to you about the new-ish Treatment Sales Tax Strategic Plan. And just for a little bit of context, before I turn it over to Shaylin, is that in previous years, before this last biennium budget, there was enough funding for all of the requests that came into T S T. So while a strategic plan is always good for any committee, it wasn't maybe as necessary in the past for T S T. As you know, during this last biennium budget, there were more requests than dollars were available as the dollars had decreased, especially for community grants. And that forced the Treatment Sales Tax Advisory Committee to come up with new metrics and look at approvals for the funding in a new and different way. And it was a hard go-around, as some of you remember from, from two years ago, to have to make some really tough decisions to triage what could get funded and what couldn't as they were helping to make those recommendations to you all. And so with that, several discussions occurred to say, okay, we're moving into an era of where funding is going to be much tighter. And what do we need to do in order to be mindful and consider those dollars appropriately? So hence, the strategic plan was born, much like what the Board of Health went through last spring. And the Treatment Sales Tax Advisory Committee then did it as well, too, in late spring and completed before summer and then has been working on it since then, which Shaylin will describe. But I do just want to say that with this new strategic plan, it really showed the need for all of the subject matter experts and who know the community gaps and who know their programs and services in wherever they work in the community, has to be brought into. It wasn't as simple as a Treatment Sales Tax, just making recommendations on the money that was there. They had to bring in their subject matter expertise, the gaps in the community, behavioral health, substance use disorder and really had to look at things in a more holistic behavioral health mindset as opposed to just a Treatment Sales Tax mindset. So with that, I'll turn it over to Shaylin, introduce herself and go through the slides.
Thanks. Good morning, everyone. My name is Shaylin Sowers. I'm the Behavioral Health Fund Program Manager with Thurston County Public Health and Social Services. And thank you for the opportunity to have a dialogue about the strategic plan. As a quick intro to Treatment Sales Tax, it's a one-tenth of one percent sales tax that was established in two thousand nine to increase funding for mental health, substance use, and therapeutic court services. This funding source accrues about eight million dollars in revenue each year and is a portion of the broader public funding system for behavioral health services. So it works alongside federal funding such as Medicaid, as well as state funding and other local dollars. As Jen was talking about earlier, T S T has an advisory committee of seven to nine volunteers. And these are subject matter experts in behavioral health who make recommendations to the board on how T S T should be spent. So historically, my understanding is that the committee has looked to Thurston Thrives and also the Public Health and Social Services Department for strategic planning. However, again, as Jen mentioned, in light of T S T budget projections and revenue projections, the committee decided it was time for a Treatment Sales Tax specific strategic plan, especially for judiciously addressing the needs of Thurston County residents that are seeking behavioral health services here and also preserving the health of the fund. So the strategic plan is intended to be a living document that goes over the vision, mission, and action steps of the committee between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five. The development of the strategic plan began in March of twenty twenty-four, facilitated by Director Freihite, and involved twelve hours of work sessions with the advisory committee, including a review of the Public Health and Social Services Strategic Plan and all committee's strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results for SOAR assessment and lots of brainstorming on focus areas within Treatment Sales Tax policy goals. So out of these work sessions, the committee developed their vision, which is empowering health and well-being through behavioral health support and services. And their mission to get there is supporting behavioral health initiatives in Thurston County by promoting meaningful connections through outcome-driven decisions, practicing responsible stewardship, and facilitating coordinated efforts. The committee, through this process, also chose three policy goals to focus on for this biennium. First being to improve the quality of life for Thurston County residents with mental health and/or substance use needs. Second, increase levels of inter-agency collaboration and cross-system planning and coordination. And third, to increase therapeutic services and resources for youth and adults with co-occurring disorders of mental health and substance use. So the strategic plan outlines the objectives of each of these goals. I am going to summarize them on this last slide here, just to show some common themes. And we're going to start with Treatment Sales Tax Budget. So in collaboration with the county budget team, the committee wants to advise the board on a percentage of Treatment Sales Tax funding to be designated towards ongoing new and community grant-funded programs. They have a particular focus on looking at earlier access to services that prevent the continuation of illness and trajectories towards the carceral system or jail or prison. And to support these efforts, the committee has encouraged our program to conduct a landscape analysis of behavioral health programs, providers, facilities, and court resources here in Thurston County, essentially taking inventory of local resources related to mental health, substance use, healing, wellness, and social well-being, which goes beyond what Treatment Sales Tax is funding. So we're currently planning out the methodology and the timeline of that analysis because it's quite a large project to take on. But those results are going to help the committee determine funding priorities by examining things like number, type, and distribution of providers and programs here in the county, the level of coordination or service integration between different providers and agencies, challenges in acquiring funding or work source, all these different things, much more. And underlying all of this, too, the committee wants to support currently funded entities and acquiring additional funding sources for services, particularly Medicaid if their agency or their services are eligible for it. While a majority of T S T-funded programs aren't currently eligible for Medicaid reimbursement since they're not within a licensed behavioral health agency, we could be doing a better job of supporting programs and applying for grants. Any questions so far?
I'll wait till the end, but yeah, I do have some questions on this.
Moving on to coordination and planning, the committee wants to see our program bring local providers, administrators, and staff of behavioral health programs together again. They're meeting in different spaces. It sounds like in prior years, Thurston County Public Health used to actually host big meetings with all these providers. So we intend on partnering with the Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administrative Services Organization and the development of something called the Thurston County Learning Collaborative, which is inspired by King County. So the vision is that this would be a meeting space for providers, administrators, and staff and behavioral health programs to come together and share what their agency is doing in the community, discuss promising practices, learn about funding opportunities, discuss challenges, and much more. Be a collaborative space, essentially. And the committee also wants to collaborate with the opioid abatement council to ascertain potential areas of overlap with Treatment Sales Tax funding. The next bullet pertains to enhancing internal program policies and procedures. So the committee encouraged our program to create a more formal compliance and monitoring process to supplement our initial legal and risk review of agreements. And this was actually completed back in August of last year in collaboration with the internal auditor. And furthermore, the committee wants to ensure that equity is demonstrated throughout our program policies and data collection for which we are currently partnering with our internal Public Health and Social Services Equity Committee on. The last bullet here is about the committee encouraging our program to seek out and considering applying for grants to supplement Treatment Sales Tax work for things like training on best practices primarily. This is important by the projected state of the T S T budget and also recognition that our partners are seeing a higher acuity of behavioral health needs and also having workforce needs to meet that greater demand for services. And that's the Treatment Sales Tax Strategic Plan. So, big thanks to the committee who has dedicated a significant amount of time and effort into this plan. And they wanted the board to have the opportunity to read it, to provide their feedback or any input. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions or comments that you have.
Thank you. Thank you for this. And I want to thank the committee. I know Commissioner Grant assisted in some of this previously. So just really thankful for, I know, the heart and mindset went into this to prepare the strategic plan of moving forward. I have a couple of questions in regards, I guess. I'll start with the Medicaid piece and just the, I guess, the environment on the federal level. And as that is getting slashed and we're wanting organizations to look more towards that side, or not look more, but also look at that end, how do we balance that piece? And does that create a little bit more of T S T reliance for the organizations moving forward if that funding does get slashed? And then my second question is, in a piece you said, you know, we would support organizations seek outside funding. And so I'm like, what does that support look like? Like, what, what does support from county or state look like to, for these organizations? Is it hands-on? Is it sending them grants? Like, what does that support look like?
Yeah, those are some great questions. And I'll say that much of that is still in the works and trying to be developed right now. Our team is just two people, myself and a data analyst. So we're also trying to work out what's going to be within our capacity to do with also our current working levels. And that first question that you asked about Medicaid and how we're going to balance potential, if there's, if any funding gets cut at the federal level for any agencies that are currently being funded, is that going to result in a greater reliance on T S T? That's a really great question and stuff that we're hoping to address better with that landscape analysis to better understand what is the full landscape of the public funding system for behavioral health right now. So, to say, I don't have a clear answer right now, but we want to look into that. And this was developed last summer when we didn't know the landscape of Medicaid, right? So the thought was, the people who could be applying for Medicaid and getting reimbursement for Medicaid should do that. And we can help them encourage that so there was less reliance on T S T. And now it's, there could be a potential flip, so we don't know what that's going to bring. But we do predict that there will be a heavy ask on T S T, more so this year even than in the past.
Commissioner Grant?
Hey, well, I just wanted to recognize, I'm sorry I'm not there today, Shaylin. I was really looking forward to seeing you. And I just want to tell you guys, you know, to make sure that, recognize this is amazing work and, and great job, everyone. I don't think I have any questions, but I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it is really exciting to, to see this work, you know, really be put together in this formula, you know, in a, in a way that, that is looking at how do we make connections? How do we do research? How do we make sure that we're using the funds to the best of our ability? And so I just want to applaud you and Joel and, and the, the Behavioral Health Advisory Report that, that, that this is really great. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grant. We really appreciate that. If I could just add on that other piece about seeking other grants, that was obviously a goal of the T S T Advisory Committee in order to look at less reliance on T S T as well, if there could be other grants. And as Shaylin mentioned, that is a big component of that, we don't have the staff to do that now. T S T would have to look at that infrastructure in order to say, okay, do we need another part-time, full-time person to be able to help agencies who aren't astute at writing grants, apply for grants, and help them get funding in other ways? So that's the part of, it has been floated, but no discussion or decision has been made as to whether we can even move in that direction.
Could you talk a little more about the landscape analysis? That I saw the brief that was sent out to the board and it seemed pretty exciting to me. I mean, I'm just curious to talk a little more about like, what will we do with it? When we, if we, if it, if it yields the results that, that we think, then, then what will we do with that?
Yeah. I think that's a great question. I think ultimately, if I could summarize it, priority areas for funding and also for areas of advocacy. Because there might not be, well, let's say that we do the analysis and we find out, hey, there's some need areas here that maybe Treatment Sales Tax isn't the best funding source to fulfill those gaps. So at least that can be something that the Treatment Sales Tax Advisory Committee can, we can discuss it and then we can bring it back to the board and ideas, like, here's what we see in the community as far as needs. And here's maybe where some applicable funding sources could be used, even if it's not Treatment Sales Tax specific.
Commissioner Grant? I think you had your hand up on this one.
Gosh, I'm trying to do this. Yes, I was just going to say that the response to around the landscape analysis, that one of the things I, I'm really excited about of the landscape analysis would be that, you know, that it's a potentially a way for, for us to have a really good look at, like, let's, for example, with this new crisis care, you know, different topics that come up around behavioral health. For example, with the crisis care, potential of a crisis care facility coming into our age, you know, into our area. We'd be able to look at the landscape analysis and be able to say, wait, what are the other crisis services that we need to hook this, this business up with? You know, it's just, it's really, it will be a really good map. And so I'm really excited. I think that, you know, having one comprehensive place where we have, you know, all of the services that are happening around behavioral health and that are, that are touching the people of Thurston County is really important. And so I'm excited to see what comes of that. Also, I will mention that, you know, Commissioner Mihia and I are considering doing, you know, maybe starting town halls or a meeting where we start, begin to bring some of the players in that landscape analysis to the table to start really talking about what, what behavioral health means for our community and how our partners are, are working together. So, that's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Shaylin?
I have a question. It's kind of a follow-up on Commissioner Mihia's question about the external funding. I'm wondering, with only two staff members on the team, what capacity exists to prioritize and pursue these outside opportunities? And is there anything that we could do to support, whether it's, I mean, in an ideal world, obviously, we just saw a briefing where, you know, things look a little bit bleak for the future. But if there was a way to support your staff with external funding, would it look like more staffing, more technical assistance, more partnerships, more funding? You know, what would it look like? How could we support you in pursuing that? I know seeking external funding is really difficult. We can put it on a slide and, and talk about it. And it sounds so simple, but it's not. Grant funding is really complex and takes a lot of time. So I'm just kind of wondering about capacity and how we could support that better.
Logistically, I mean, we would have to discuss that. You know, because it would, it's not something that the current staff of two could take on and add capacity to. And a need has been seen in some of these smaller, you know, nonprofits and entities for assistance. And they often look to the county. We've seen that in other departments, divisions within our department. And so it would have to look at some, whether it's funding or staffing or whatnot, to make that happen.
Okay.
And if there was the ability to make that happen.
Okay.
Jen, I know that you're looking at your organization and the structure and how that works. And so that's, that's a component as well.
Yeah.
Give you time as a, as a new director to get, get a administration that can work towards some of the goals like this strategic plan lays out, but then also things that you're working through, seeing.
Yeah, and I, I really appreciate all the work that you've been putting into that because I know there's a lot of transition and a lot of change happening. We just in our planning session yesterday talked a little bit about some of those transitions and how to support public health in that. And I'm really interested in like, finding creative ways to support you and your team because I know there's so much going on. And this is a topic that is really important to me and I know really important to my seatmates as well. So I guess I have a broader question that would probably be for another meeting, but it's kind of a broader question for the board regarding potential funding strategies. Because on page five, when you talk about your policy goals, I see increased therapeutic services and resources for youth and adults with co-occurring disorders. And that's so important. We already are lacking systems that can support folks in that population. And if we're going to try to increase therapeutic services, we need more funding. I give kudos to your staff for being as creative as you possibly can and trying to use the resources you have. resources you have and allocate those responsibly, but we as a board and the public also know that this is going to require more funding to actually achieve these policy goals. And I know that the treatment sales tax can be higher than 1%. So what would a conversation look like to try to increase that sales tax to 2% or 3%? How, like, what would that process look like? Would that require a vote?
We can research that and bring that back to you, bring it back to the full board.
Okay.
Happy to do that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Increasing the T S D?
Mm-hmm. We can go up to 3%, right?
I think 0.3%.
Yeah, yeah, 0.3%.
Yeah, probably voter approval, I would guess, yeah.
I think it's only one of, it's voter approval.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be really interested in talking about that to see if that's a possibility.
I will just end, as we're, as we're moving forward into this next biennial budget in the summer, the team is having to work on, with the committee, who we have members here today in the audience, on what are the new metrics this year in order to make the best, most appropriate decisions. Jen Smith has been very involved and will be involved this summer as will I in helping the staff and the committee work through that as we put forward the recommendations for this next budget year, so. I'm excited about that.
Can you talk a little bit about the connection between slide five and slide six? Like, you've got policy goals, and then it says that's 24, 25. Was that just like a recap of what they were focused on the last, or no, but we're in 25? So versus the summary of objectives?
Yes.
How do those?
Yes. So this was, so in the format that we have in the strategic plan, we have it set so there's, for each of these policy goals, then there's three different objectives within those. And so the summary slide is a summary of the themes of each of those nine objectives.
That would nestle under?
Yes.
Okay. All right, sounds good. I knew that there was a way that fit, but.
Appreciate the question.
Anything else for these guys?
Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thanks for the hard work.
Thanks, everybody. Sorry I didn't get to see you all in person.
Next up, we have item three, Martin Way Corridor, federal ask.
Please, Chair, this was a concept in, from an economic development standpoint, also I would argue that it's a opportunity for us to look at potential partnerships with our city, other partners like Transit, I'm sorry, Transit and others, but the concept is looking at the unincorporated area referred to as Martin Way Corridor, knowing that we're researching Carpenter Way property and seeing if the board would want us to go after federal appropriation on developing the Martin Way Corridor and looking to get federal dollars for infrastructure support. Infrastructure such as, you know, water sewer, some of the things that are necessary for that area to continue to develop and grow. Obviously, we wouldn't want to do this alone. We'd want to work with the City of Lacey as this is in their area. I think it's in their U G A area. But before we get off and having conversations about this, we just wanted to touch base here, answer any questions. It's more of a concept than it is a specific, we're going after this request, but we do think that something that brings in infrastructure dollars to that area, and if we look at the Carpenter Way property as an example, partner in bringing in the utilities for that site increases the ability for that site to move forward with the project and pencil, we think there's economic value to that.
Can I?
Can you hear this one?
Can I add? Yeah.
Do you want to come up?
No, I just wanted to hear the discussion.
Okay. I know you've been involved in it for a long time.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Mihia.
Thank you. So thank you, county manager, for, for that. I've been touching base with a lot of our federal delegation as well as some connections I have in D C in regards to requests in terms of appropriations or what that looks like around this year, or what is going to be the priority in terms of funding. And things that I've heard is it's going to be housing or quick projects or, and in terms of, of housing, it's not, I think Rob was the one who, who came up with the piece of the infrastructure of things that had been funded in previously. And as we were having conversations, the Martin Way Corridor has been an item that has been discussed at TRPC in terms of the transportation and all of the improvements that are needed to take place. And being that housing is, is also one of those items, we had those discussions on what would assist in creating housing around that Martin, Martin Way Corridor, and so the infrastructure piece was kind of where, where we landed. And I've touched base with some of the Lacey City Council members to see if there is interest in something like this, and, and there is. And so I, you know, we would love support from, from the board as kind of trying to dial this, this request in.
Yeah, I think we would, I would need direction from the board to, to start looking at this. It is a concept. I think what we need to look at from the concept is, as we sit with partners, which would be the first step, what is something that is, is approachable and doable? What are we going to actually ask for? As Commissioner Mihia laid out, the, the corridor opens the conversation for things that could get funded. If there is workforce housing, infrastructure, if it, if it spurs economic development because they come in and help with the development of areas that don't have the utilities at this point, that all could be beneficial. And what we can, could conceptually look, think about is what if the city, county, and other partners are together asking for this, for that area? That's part of what we'd want to sketch out, but we don't have a specific, here's our proposal. What I'd be looking for is the board to say, yes, county manager, go and meet with these partners and see, is there enough commonality to come up with a proposal and be ready for a request? Now, timeframe will be short, so we have to deal in the realm of the possible, but even if it's simply we have an idea and we start talking to the delegation about what these ideas are, prepping this for either an ask this time or a future ask, I think is something worthwhile for that corridor.
Is the whole, I'm trying to remember the map. Isn't it, maybe Mark, you know this, but the, isn't there like pieces that are not in the Lacey U G A, and then there's pieces that are, and then there's pieces that are in Lacey? Like, aren't all three of those represented in this corridor?
There's pieces in Olympia, there's pieces in
Olympia, too.
The county U G A, or Lacey U G A, and then Lacey.
Yeah, it jogs. I'm just curious about like, you know, if, like, for example, if it were all in the Lacey U G A, or the county piece was all Lacey, and we would anticipate that's going to be annexed, but, I mean, Lacey's very aggressive about their annexation, vision and all of that. So I guess I would be wondering why we would be leading an effort like that when it's really Lacey's future? That's at stake, not ours, but I don't know. That's just a thought. Commissioner Fornier.
I was just wanting to say that I'm, you know, conceptually in support of the concept that there's, you know, it's multiple jurisdictions that it covers. It's a, it's a main corridor where development's going on, and so finding, you know, money to support that from outside. And there are some large undeveloped tracks that are zoned for the right type of development.
So in case, in terms of why we would be leading it is because it, while they are, have an aggressive timeline on annexing county U G A, and I know that this is an area where they've demonstrated interest for it, it wouldn't just be the county, it would be basically a collaborative ask between the county and the City of Lacey. So it wouldn't just be the county taking the charge on this, and I think that's why the county manager is seeking direction to approach the City of Lacey in a more formal manner to really look, you know, into that partnership. So it wouldn't just be us carrying the water for this, it would be a partnership between the county and Lacey.
Are there questions, comments?
I have a question.
Yes.
So I've heard a couple times that the timeline is really short for this, and can someone clarify what that timeline would look like? Like, how much time do we have to put something together?
Well, I think the timeline is short if we're going to make a federal request this, this year.
Would it have to be like a month, two months, or?
I don't know that they've posted.
They have not posted anything yet for any of the appropriations. What we've heard from Murray's office is that it's going to be released in the coming, I'm looking at Taylor.
I heard that they're, they're finalizing it, but they don't have a due date yet, so, but it's short to come up.
Yeah, and so usually, once they're released, I remember last year for Senator Cantwell, we had a couple of weeks. For Senator Murray, the timeline was shorter, and for Strickland, it was, it was very quick turnaround time. And so that's why, I guess, you know, I would seek direction for the county manager to reach out to the City of Lacey and, and start these conversations to seek this partnership. And if we're not able to meet this deadline, you know, maybe it's something we do next year. I, I would love to put in something this year, but if it's not possible, I'm, you know, I, I understand that.
And part of this starts with scoping with the other group, with the other agencies to figure out what are, what would we go after. I think what we're saying is that the corridor represents a lot of opportunity and, and areas that we believe we can get funding for, but then we sit down with, with that group and engage specifically about what does that look like and what are we specifically going to ask for? I can't say at this moment, this is what we're going to ask for, because I haven't even met with the other groups.
Well, I can say that, just, I know that from my time on TRPC, which has now been many years ago, we were working on this project. I mean, this has been a regional focus area for, through TRPC for a while, so like, on, on that, we, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be starting from scratch, and we've got resources available in terms of the vision there. There was some kind of study that was presented at the time I was on TRPC about kind of what, what, what could be done. So it should be something that we could tap into through TRPC and, you know, get, and I guess that's why I would be, I guess, supportive is because this has been something that's been discussed, and I never remember anybody expressing concern about it, and everybody seemed to like the idea of, of trying to develop this area corridor.
Could we have our guest?
I offered it to him. I knew it was going to happen.
I'm sorry.
Going up, Mark.
Hi, all. I'm Mark Daly. I'm the executive, executive director at Thurston Regional Planning Council, and my apologies, I saw this on the agenda last minute, decided, hey, I want to just go hear this in person. So what I can add is, this has been a priority for our whole council. Folks all across the county recognize that Martin Way Corridor as one of the most important corridors and that has a lot of opportunity because it used to be a highway, and now it's a local road that's very straight and cuts through, you know, that north part of our county, so it's incredibly valuable. So I'll, I'll just say that if there is anything that TRPC can do to help support in an effort to, for an ask, would love to, to help out with this because appreciate seeing the, the, the vision to keep trying to work through getting funding to implement that plan.
Any quick as remark about, I mean, you know, I know that I was on 2019, it was my first year on TRPC, and it predated that because you guys were working on the study at that time.
Yep. We've been working on it for quite some time and, and now working on implementation. There's, there's a grant right now where we're working with all the partners, which started with, just for, for everyone. The partners on this have been Thurston County, Lacey, Olympia, intercity transit, and one of the first parts of implementation is we received state funding to design up to 10 crossings of Martin Way pedestrian crossings, because that was actually one of the biggest issues that came out of that was, and, and that is an economic development piece as well. If people can't move through the system in different ways of getting around, then they can't get to the businesses that they need to get to and the places they need to go. So that is a first step tied to the plan. There are lots of things that could be looked at in that plan and kind of carried forward for, for an ask.
Okay, so do we have support for the direction to county manager regarding reaching out to Lacey and trying to form and connecting TRPC and formulating some type of ask along the timeline? I see a thumb from Commissioner Fornier. I see three in the room. Commissioner Grant may not be available, but I see direction from the board.
Sounds good.
All right, there's five. So we have all five commissioners. Thanks for that information. I knew we were going to need you, so. Okay, very good. That's the end of the agenda. Is there any other commissioner items? We do have commissioners check-in at 1:00 P. M. Okay, then we are adjourned. See everybody.